Make sure that if those opinions were shared, they could give the counter argument.
Okay.
So that was what they.
I just didn't want them to feel like they missed an opportunity.
I would like to call to order the January tenth regular board meeting of the Mounds View School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first order of business is item one dot two adaption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move to item one dot three, organization of the school board. I would entertain a motion for nomination and election of officers.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I will nominate the following slate of officers for the school board for two thousand and twenty-three. I would like to nominate Jonathan Weinhegen as Chair, Diane Glashine as Vice Chair, Sandra Westerman as Clerk, and Shawna Bach as Treasurer.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would affirm policies BG zero four hundred, school board ethics, and BG zero four oh one, school board members code of conduct, as well as policy BG zero one oh seven, rules governing the transaction of business will govern the proceedings of the school board, and that the Robert Rules of Order newly revised will remain the parliamentary procedural guide. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move to item two dot one, announcements. Upcoming meetings on January twenty-fourth at seven P M. We have a regular board meeting. And on Thursday, February second at five P M., we have a work session here, both meetings at the district center. Shawna, would you like to read the gifts?
Yes, please, thank you. So there were twelve gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of three thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars. And there were seventy-seven gifts received for the Ralph Rader Food Shop this period for a total of ninety-five thousand dollar, ninety-five four hundred and ninety-eight. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend thanks to the donors.
Thank you, Shawna. At this time, we will move to agenda item two dot two, superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, Diane. As many of you know, this year, we have a district operational goal to enhance and expand our programming and community education. And one of the areas we're focused on is early childhood programming. Tonight, I'm happy to report that we're getting some very positive feedback. Specifically, our early childhood program was recently awarded a Reader's Choice Award as the best preschool in Mounds View and New Brighton from the A B C newspapers. Now, more information about the awards and the recipients are going to be included in the January twenty-seventh edition of that newspaper, so be on the lookout for that publication. And I want to congratulate everyone who's involved with our early childhood program. They're a wonderful team and doing some great work. So with that, I will end my report.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Lennox. We will now move to item three dot two, approval of consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item four dot one, we have policy review, and I'd like to turn this over to Superintendent Lennox.
Great, thank you, Diane. As part of the school board's ongoing policy work, tonight, we are bringing forward the five thousand series of the ends and goals policies. There are ten policies in this series. Both board members as well as administrators have had the opportunity to review all of them. We did that independently. We also collaboratively gave them a look at a work session, January fourth. At this time, there are no recommendations for revision. Therefore, there's no action for the board this evening, but we do always like to let the public know that these policies have been reviewed, and they will be updated, and that will be recorded on them and posted to our website going forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item five dot one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three federal budget amendments. And I would like to welcome Bernice Humnick, Executive Director of Business Services.
Thank you. This evening, we're here to discuss the federal budget amendment. The federal government has passed three major relief packages related to the pandemic. The grant funds related to the pandemic are managed by M D E. The grants have specific criteria, including spending timelines, carryover procedures, and expenditure standard requirements. Attached, you will find a list of the federal grants that have been included. Revenues and expenditures will match, and the general fund has been impacted by seven million sixty-four thousand four hundred and ten and forty-two cents. Community Ed will be impacted by one million nine hundred and thirty-seven five eighty-four. The detail behind lists the grants that have been included. All of them are related to the pandemic, with the exception of one, which is Title Two. Included in the package will be the Special Education Recovery Funds for three to twenty-one-year-olds. Special education are funding for three- to five-year-old recovery funds. Community Education S R three grant. S R three, expanded summer learning fund funding. And then, learning recovery funding is included in this grant modification, budget amendment. And again, I touch base on Title Two is the only one that's not so associated with the pandemic relief funds. And then, the S R three grant has been included as well.
Right. And I might lean in here too and just offer that, for those who may be watching at home or paying attention, this, as a reminder, we talked about this at the work session, isn't new money. After we go through our audit, it is money that is carried over, unspent money. So much of the relief money came with a three-year plan, and so anything you don't spend in year one, in fact, some we can't spend, we have to insert in order, gets recorded as revenue coming in. So we're just aligning our revenues and expenditures as we move forward, as is the practice of this board.
Great.
So we would need action.
Yep. Yep, so it is recommended that the school board approve the budget amendment as presented above, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Bernice, next up is five dot two, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four federal budget assumptions.
Tonight, we want to provide an update on our annual budget development process. We have started the process for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Board members had an opportunity to review this information at the work session last week, and there is no action this evening. We wanted to provide the public with highlights of some of the key areas of work. The following assumptions are based on information taken from the original budget for the current school year of twenty-two, twenty-three, school board input, and any pertinent legislative action. Revenues, starting with revenues, there are two areas we want to highlight. District enrollment is projected to be at twelve thousand three forty-three point eight, and that's weighted volume. This is a conservative estimate. We do not want to overprotect enrollment. And so, we will continue to watch enrollment closely, and we'll be adjusting as necessary as we move forward. State funding, the basic funding formula estimate will include a two percent increase for the next year from six thousand eight sixty-three to seven thousand dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This percentage will be factored into budget calculations. The board continues their ongoing commitment to class size assumptions. Finally, in the area of instructional support, there will be no changes to supply allocations. The final version of the assumptions will be brought to the board on January twenty-fourth. The next budget phase will provide allocation to the building principals so that they can begin their planning necessary to develop the building-specific budgets. These assumptions, along with the building-specific budgets, will result in the final budget that is adopted in June of two thousand twenty-three. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Bernice?
No, just to comment, you know, just for the viewing audience, we always start our budget processing at the first of the year. Our staff works very hard to get it prepared, and we go through a lot of reiterations of the budget. Sometimes what you see on T V is just us saying yay, nay, that type of thing, but this is a lot of work. Our staff puts in a lot of work. We get a lot of input from our buildings, our principals, our teachers, and a whole lot of folks. But it is our most important policy document that we do produce here at the school district. So look forward to going through that process through June twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bernice.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to item six dot one, DOP goal update, review instructional coaching model. And I would like to welcome Angie Peschel, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Heidi Sari, Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Hello, everyone, good evening. I wanted, first of all, I think this is the first time we've had a chance for you to be, to meet Dr. Heidi Sari, one of the newer members of our instructional support team. So Heidi, you want to give a little bribe?
Yep, thank you, I'm Heidi Sari. Well, this is my third year in Mounds View, starting as a teacher at Turtle Lake. I bring many years of educational experience and healthcare experience in that field for organizational development and learning as well. So thank you for having me tonight to talk about our instructional coaching model here.
So here tonight, one of the district operating goals is around instructional coaching, and the goal really focuses on enhancing the support that we provide to teachers as they provide instruction to students. We are a district that believes in continuous improvement, so while our teachers do great work, we all know that, we're always looking for ways to help them improve their practices. And so, this goal really focuses on how we can help support teachers with an instructional coaching model. So in your packet, you have a document that lays out the key components of that. We're just going to highlight some of those for you tonight, some of those components, where we're at in the process of going through that goal and where we intend to be by the end of the year. So we have had a supporting role in our system for a number of years called an instructional strategies facilitator. That is a mouthful, a lot of syllables there. So we call it the I S F. And our I S Fs have done great work over the course of the last few years, but it hasn't been systemic work. It hasn't been aligned across our system. And so, in twenty nineteen, we started working on that. We brought together a design team to say, how can we better align the support that our I S Fs are providing to teachers as they provide instruction to students? That work that we started in nineteen twenty got interrupted, as you can imagine, but we kept working towards that. And so, we were excited this year to be ready to present to you a goal and something that we could continue working on and provide some systems and structures around that support that we provide to students.
So one of the things that was continued with that work was investigating different instructional coaching models that might fit for us here at Mounds View. And part of that included researching three main models. The first was Jim Knight's instructional coaching model, well-known in the educational world. Elena Aguilar, another well-known educator and provider for coaching teams. And then, Center for Educational Leadership out of the University of Washington was the third model that we seriously considered. And based on our research and discussion with each of those different companies, we decided to go with the Center for Educational Leadership for a few different reasons. The first is that it aligned with the coaching framework and the Instructional Leadership Academy professional development that our principals have been engaged in for the last number of years. And the other piece for Center for Educational Leadership is that because our principals were already being trained with the Center for Educational Leadership, it would allow us to have some common language between our coaches and our administration, which would provide for hopefully some seamless integration. So the other component that we had was to create a schedule for training during this current school year. And we did that in partnership with the Center for Educational Leadership. Another piece that we really liked about the work that they brought was that they were very interested in personalizing the training for our I S Fs to fit within the system and the structure that Mounds View had in place. So instead of trying to figure out how a model might work with our system and structure, they were willing to work with us to personalize that. They have been a really great partner so far, both in partnering with the curriculum and instruction team, but also in partnering with our coaches and our principals for this work. So we are currently at a place where we have completed two of the five cycles that our I S Fs and principals will take part in. These are in-person days. Each cycle is a two-day cycle. And in the morning of both of those days, our principals are part of that training. They come to participate with our coaches. They come to hear about the research for that particular cycle that we're in. And then, they have a chance to collaborate with our I S Fs and talk about how they will bring back the learning that they're doing in these sessions to their buildings and how that will apply to their students and their teachers. September was our first launch date for that. That was an all-day launch to set the ground and the framework for what this coaching model will look like in our district. In October, we had our first official cycle, so our first official two-day cycle. Every cycle follows a very similar pattern. The Center for Educational Leadership begins each cycle with the research around the topic. So for October, the topic was all around goal-setting conversations with teachers. So they brought in the research that supports why we should have goal-setting conversations, what those could look like. And then, the professional development moves into some modeling, so giving our I S Fs and principals a chance to see what that might look like in action. In the afternoons, the coaches come back for an afternoon session. Principals are released to go back to their buildings. And then, our I S Fs have a chance to work with the trainers from Center for Educational Leadership to practice some of those moves, we call them coaching moves. So really having a chance to talk with each other about that, having a chance to access our trainers from the Center for Educational Leadership to talk about what that might look like when they go back to their building and work with their teachers. In December, we completed our second of the five cycles, and December's was centered around the outcomes of the goal-setting conversation and then how that will affect lesson planning. So the teachers worked with their coaches, kind of reviewed the goal that was set in place for these coaching cycles, and then talked about what that lesson planning might look like based on the goal that they wanted to achieve in their classroom. They also talked about observing instruction in the classroom, so having a coach come in to observe their instruction and be able to provide some data to them and some feedback about what they're noticing and different conversations around teacher growth. One of the unique pieces we think about this as well is that all of our coaches team up with another partner to be what we call their thought partner. So the thought partner is somebody who can take kind of a step back from being in that active coaching role with the teacher and is actually a coach to the coach, is able to help pull out some pieces that maybe the coach misses in real time or is able to provide additional support or some questions that that coach might ask to help really dig deep into teacher development and teacher learning. So I will pause there for a minute. That's kind of a background on where we are at so far with our training for this school year.
So another component of the DOP goal includes, so that's a lot of the adaptive work, like what is this going to look like in practice? Another thing that we need to pay attention to is some of the logistical or the technical components, like who gets coached? And when do they get coached? And how many times a year do they get coached? And how long does a session take? So we're getting some guidance from C E L or Center for Educational Leadership, but we're going to pull together a task force of principals and teacher leaders who are in this training right now. It'll involve our M V A president, Stacy Vanderport, as well. So we can talk about what those logistical components will be right now. Right now, we're just engaged in this is how to do it, and the actual what pieces of it, we'll bring a task force together around that. So we're just working on what that will look like right now and the structure of that, and we'll be inviting some folks to that within the next couple of weeks here so that we can have that in place. Our intent is to have it ready to go for implementation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and we are on track to do that as well.
So some additional next steps to this work, we have three more cycles to complete with C E L. We, in between each of those cycles, we also have some virtual follow-up sessions for our coaches where they can connect with the trainers from C E L. So we actually just finished up one this evening with our secondary coaches. They had a chance to debrief some of those planning conversations and gather feedback from each other. In February, we will kick off cycle three. That will be around the planning conversations that we have with teachers and outcomes from those, and a chance to debrief some of those planning conversations that had happened. In April, we will focus on coaching, the coaching cycle itself, how do we plan for impact? How do we coach towards collective efficacy as a group? And then, our final cycle will be towards the end of May, and that is all around reflection. So how did those conversation outcomes go? How did the coaching cycle work this year? We're going to ask teachers to also, these coaches to also reflect on team learning as part of their coaching next year will involve coaching into our teacher teams and not just individual teachers.
So some other components of the plan that we'll be working on as we move into the second half of the year here is to create a plan for continued support for those teachers who are currently being trained. We know we can't just provide the training this year and say, good luck. So we want to make sure that we've got a plan and support to continue supporting them throughout the year. We also, our I S Fs are on a four-year term limit, so they are in the role of an I S F for four years, and then we rotate them out to give more teachers some opportunities to be teacher leaders. So we also are creating a plan for how we will continue to provide support for those teachers in the professional development. We're not going to have C E L come in every single year, but they have provided us with the resources. So we'll be doing a train-the-trainer type of model. So Heidi and I will be able to provide training for any I S Fs who come on after this year and continue to support them. And then, we'll have the full plan for implementation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We'll have that plan ready to go by the time we leave here in June. We have been really impressed with our teachers yet again, and our teacher leaders and our principals in their openness to this training. As we were, you know, looking at the different models that were out there, and all of them are really great, and you think they can do some wonderful things for your system, but you have to make a decision about which one you think is going to best fit our system. So we were really confident in C E L, and the teachers have really responded very positively to the training. They believe that it fits the work that we're doing. They have made comments like, we haven't been able to have conversations this in-depth about instruction in a really long time. So they've been grateful for that, excited about that, and, because it's a lot of time. I mean, it's, you know, it's two days in a row that they're out of their buildings, but they're finding the training valuable. And then, tonight, like Heidi said, from, you know, three-thirty to five-thirty, we had teachers dedicated to staying on and talking about some of the challenges and successes in the work that they're doing. So they've been very open to it, and I'm just very excited for what this will do for our system in improving the teacher efficacy around what they're doing with students, and then also that will result in better performance for our students as well. So that's what we have for you tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the model.
Any questions? I guess I'll just comment that the work, this type of work wouldn't be possible without great partnerships from our teachers, so I just want to, you know, recognize that. We've, that's kind of something Mounds View has long been known for, is the good relationships that we have with our teachers. So very proud of that work, and I'm sure everyone is excited to kind of get back into this stuff now that, you know, we're kind of back to a little bit more of a normal learning model. So just wanted to make those comments and excited to see this move forward.
Great, thanks, Sandra.
Yeah, I want to echo that, Sandra, because I think we can't overstate how important partnerships are with all of our employees, certainly in this case, our instructional leaders. And every year, I come back to you in the spring and talk about QCOM. And one of the positions I talk about is the I S Fs, these teacher leaders, these coaching positions, and their willingness to step up and be leaders among their peers to try to improve our system and the experience for our students in all classrooms is just absolutely amazing. It's dedicated. So thank you, Angie, thank you, Heidi, for all you're doing. It's just incredibly, incredibly important work, and you'll hear us say often, school improvement is people improvement. If each of us gets a little better, our schools get better, and this is an example of that at work. So thank you.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, congratulations on your past excellent work and look forward to more in the future. And as we all know in this district... And as we all know in this district, when it comes down to quality, one of the big indicators which people really like in the district are the quality and the dedication of our teachers. And we see that in their training and their efforts every day in the classroom and even over the summer. So thank you.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
Thank you. All right, next up, Item 7.1, Updates. We'll start with Jim, AMSD and Legislative. It was a big meeting last Friday, right, Jim?
Yeah, and there was a big meeting here last Thursday. On the legislative side, we welcomed our local legislators, and we got to talk to them about our own special district needs everywhere, from school funding to special ed funding to school meals to starting dates. We had a very good session. As Chris mentioned, too, is that our relationships are very important, and our relationship with our legislators are very important. AMSD hosted the governor and lieutenant governor on last Friday morning, and they spoke a lot about the same issues we spoke with to our legislators. A lot on school funding, really truly hoping for an education session in which a lot of educational needs in the public schools are dealt with and funded. So it was going to be, it's going to be a busy session. It's already a busy session. I've sat in a couple ed committee. It's already, and so, you know, we look forward to moving along and making a lot of progress there. I think this is a very, if you're in public education, this is a very hopeful year. And I always have to keep the nose to the grindstone over at the legislature because between now and May 22nd is an eternity of time. So the game can change any minute. And so, but we're very fortunate to have folks that are really dedicated and determined to make public education better.
Thank you, Jim. Sandra, 916?
I don't have a report where our meeting is delayed a week this year because, or this month, due to elections. And there will be some new board members joining 916 at the next meeting next week that will be sworn in. So I will bring back a report in February.